She don't know.
Huh? Oh, I know.
A sign and sheet if anybody wants to address the board. Anybody need an agenda?
I got my phone off. Mine too.
A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners dated September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at five fifteen P. M. in the conference room of the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presrocky, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. As we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of the citizens of our county, and we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call Commissioner Melner.
Here.
Commissioner View.
Here.
Commissioner Barron.
Here.
Commissioner Moyle.
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson.
Here. All right. This order or this meeting of the County Commissioners will come to order. Thank you for attending tonight. On our special orders of business, we have the second of two public hearings for our financial year twenty-three, twenty-four. If you would like to address the board regarding the budget, twenty, financial year twenty-four, I'm sorry, not twenty-three, twenty-four, you are entirely welcome. Is anybody, I would need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Melner to open the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Does anybody wish to address the Commission regarding this year's budget? Does anybody wish to address the Commission regarding this year's budget, please? The podium would be yours. And the final time I have to ask, does anybody wish to address the Commission regarding financial year twenty-four budget? None being said, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Melner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would pass. Thank you very much. Okay, we have approval of the minutes of the previous board meeting, which was nine five of twenty-three.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, support, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion, please. None seen, signify, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are a matter of record now. All right, very good. I, we have an agenda tonight. We have some additions to the agenda. Under unfinished business, item number two, this would be my submission. If it would please the Commission, I need discussion on municipal council. And under new business, at the beginning, call it item zero point five, rules and procedures. Is there any other additions or amendments to come to the agenda by any other Commissioner?
What was the?
On item, okay, the first item under unfinished business is municipal council. So that would be item two under unfinished business. Under new business, zero point five at the beginning of the line, its rules and procedures. I would ask again, is there any other amendments to come before this board? And we have an offer for an amended agenda.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we accept the agenda as amended.
Moved by Commissioner Peterson, support, supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, that would pass. All right, presentation of written communications, communications received, communications forwarded. Anything, Ashley?
No.
All right, very good. Reports of standing statutory, special committees, and others.
No.
We have nothing. Okay, then we have Kurt Larson has signed up for comment on agenda items. Did you pass that back to these two, please? Mr. Larson, the podium is yours.
I am Kurt Larson from Beatty Rock Township. I'm appalled that you have before you the budget to vote on tonight that has never been reviewed with we, the taxpayer, to ask questions of each department head or administrator, why they need the monies they are requesting. Shame on you. The townships can do it, why can't you? Business can do it, why can't you? I believe you, the board, should vote no on the budget until Ms. Young presents it to we, the taxpayer, in a public forum. It is our duty to have a right to say how our money is spent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last call for public comment on agenda items, please. Good, that would be closed. All right, we have reports. We'll start with the administrators' report.
Other interview on Friday for Delta County Airport, which looked promising. This week, there will be a contractor on the runway performing crack ceiling and markings through our capital airport, airport capital improvement plan. Tonight for the Delta County Parks, we're awarding the bid for the water and electric project at the Pioneer Trail. And for the Delta County budget, with the collaboration of the Delta County elected officials, the department heads, and the administrative office, the Delta County budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four will be presented to the Commissioners for approval. On Friday, I met with Dave Xavier from our Veteran Affairs Department, and we discussed the present and future plans with the department. We discussed the many services that the department does for the veterans. It seemed like Mr. Xavier is a jack of all trades when it comes to finding help for veterans, from VA assistance to personal finance. We discussed how to receive the financing for increased service, service programs that could be applied to the department. During the Commissioners' workshop, it was discussed applying the Public Act two fourteen of eighteen ninety-nine to assist veterans in need. However, we both agreed that bestowing a millage on the taxpayers without consent is not the route that the department would like to take. We discussed the Public Act one ninety-two of nineteen fifty-three, which is Mr. Xavier's goal for the department. However, the county isn't prepared for a full Veterans Affairs Department yet. I will keep you updated as steps are accomplished before we present it to the appropriate committees and the board.
Is that it?
Yep.
I would need a motion to place this in file, please.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, support, supported by Commissioner Peterson, with additional discussion. None seen, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This would pass. Mr. Melner, do you have anything to report on the Personnel Committee minutes of nine fourteen?
Finances first.
Oh, but whatever.
Personnel is.
Doesn't matter. Personnel committee meetings first.
Personnel. Do you want to speak on the airport, what we did on the airport? There was a session in there. Since you're the, oh, for the liaison.
For compliance of observer, airplane observer, we recommended that we hire a person for that observer position that's required by the federal government, and at the same time make it a full-time position and have them do other maintenance and custodian duties at the airport. We put that recommendation to be brought before the board.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Melner, anything?
There was one other, we were in closed session, so we'll, we'll be talking about that at closed session at the end of the, the new stuff.
Very good.
So.
I would need a motion to put the finance or Personnel Committee minutes on file.
So moved.
All right, so moved by Commissioner View.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those would pass. All right, Finance Committee meeting of nine fifteen, twenty-three. Mr. Barron?
Yes, we had several items, one pertaining to the parks and the so conservation districts wanting to work out an equipment agreement. We put, we tabled that. The Cory from the maintenance is pertaining to the wood processor, wanted to try it out. And my understanding is it's, it's at the, it's going to be at the Pioneer Trail. There's some wood potentially to split there, so that's going to be happening, I think, in the next couple of weeks, or next week. I'm not positive their timetable, they haven't set yet, as far as I know. And we had a couple other items which are going to be agenda items tonight. So that, that'll be brought up later on. And we also had a table of another item pertaining to the district court. And that's, that's suggestive what we have to report. The rest of, the rest of the items that are in the Finance Committee are coming up as agenda items.
All right, all those in favor, or do I have a motion to place?
I make a motion to place in the file.
All right, very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson, Barron, I'm sorry.
I'll support it.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good, that passes. Department head updates. Are there any other department heads who wish to update the board regarding your department? Yes, please. Your Honor, welcome.
Gentlemen, I have a matter of urgency that I really need to discuss with everyone here. It was brought to the Finance Committee here recently. Unfortunately, I was out of town and not able to attend, and I just feel that maybe something got missed, so I'm presenting it to you now. We have money in our budget that came through a scale grant from Lansing that's earmarked for the Drug and Sobriety Court. There's a budget item in there that has to do with contracts, and we have money available in that budget item. I contacted Lansing and explained to them, as I'm explaining to you, that we've had some changes in the district court. We moved our criminal clerk up to the court administrator, leaving that position unfilled. We're losing another employee this Friday who's resigned and because she believes she can make more money at home. And so we're short-staffed and under a big crunch. I reached out to the former county administrator, Emily DeSalvo, who used to work for me, who's spent most of her career in the courts and knows the district court better than anyone, really, and asked her if she would be willing to come back and serve as a consultant to assist the court administrator in learning the responsibilities that are associated with running the Drug and Sobriety Court and submitting the grants that are necessary for us to keep it operating. So the matter was tabled, but that really doesn't help us because if it comes back to the Finance Committee and then back to the board for a vote, by October one, those funds are gone. So I have money available to do this. I've got a person willing to do it, who would really ease up some of the burden on my staff and help with morale. And all I'm looking to do is ask the board to approve Emily DeSalvo to serve as a consultant to the district court, to be paid by funds that are already there, wouldn't cost anybody any money other than it's right there in the grant, and to serve in that capacity until those funds are dried up. And her focus would be on administration of the Drug and Sobriety Court and all that goes with it. She would, she's indicated she would come in after hours to assist our current court administrator, that she would be available on call if we needed her, that she would keep track of her time and submit regular billing statements. And so I'm looking to get this done and as quickly as possible before that money is gone. I'm also looking, maybe more importantly, to bring some needed help, immediate needed help to the district court where we're shorthanded, the workload doesn't go down, and we're just really struggling to, to keep on top of the work and serve the citizens. So I don't know procedurally if it's possible, but I would certainly ask the court, the board to consider granting me the authority to go ahead and contract with Emily DeSalvo so that I can get her going to work, utilize those grant funds that are available before they evaporate on October first. I got a week to get this done. That's what I would like you to consider doing, and I hope you will, because it would be a great service to those of us who work in the district court, particularly the employees that are working long, hard hours, trying to keep the thing going and trying to serve the citizens of the community. Thank you.
Your Honor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is this set up for, I mean, a certain amount of time, or is this, would it be a month, two months, or is it a certain amount of hours, or?
It would be done as soon as the grant money is gone. So October one, the grant money is gone, so I can pay her from now until October one, when the grant money is gone, that's it. It's, it's, we're talking about a week.
All right, I was not sure of the name. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, sure. Any other questions? Yes.
So you're, so you're only going to bring her in for one week, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, because when, when we were talking about in the Finance Committee, it was, I asked that question, how long would it be? And it was as long and as much as we can have, could use her.
Yeah, that's why I was afraid, I was afraid that maybe there was some miscommunication there. In fairness to the employees that came there, my original idea was I thought we had, we had additional monies available outside of that grant. And so at that time when we were talking, we were talking about a, maybe a longer-term arrangement, but those monies are not available. The grant monies have the blessing of Lansing, you use them strictly for administering the Drug and Sobriety Court. And so it would be basically that window of time between now and the time that the grant money dries up. So I did call Mrs. DeSalvo and ask her if she'd be available between now and, and the end of the month, and she said she would. So that's why this is kind of urgent, and that's what we're asking for.
Okay, well.
Is there any action we can take on this tonight?
Yeah, we, we'll, yeah, I think there is.
Well, I thank you for that information, because we didn't have that. So we were, it's all, that, thank you for shedding a whole lot more light on this thing.
Sure, sure.
Appreciate that.
And I, I probably put my bad employees in a bad spot by having to leave and expecting them to go, and so I, so I don't fault them at all for this because it was a little bit confusing as we moved to this point, but that's where we are.
Might not be an issue of fault, Your Honor, so I think we can do something for you tonight.
That would be fantastic. Thank you all.
Can we?
Yes, I think we, it's been tabled, but we got the committee here, we can, it's been, we don't have to wait for the finality.
Mr. Chair, what?
Excuse me, please.
I didn't.
Your thought. You'll get, you'll get it next, I promise. We can, we have an emergency exception on our financial rule. Go ahead, Mr. View. I'll make the motion that we grant Judge Parks what he needs based on the emergency of the new information we didn't have.
And I'll support it.
Support by, moved by me, supported by Mr. Barron. Additional discussion, Mr. View. We can do it, and we will. I don't need to hear from the audience, please.
All right, I just wanted to make sure we follow the rules of procedure, because I am in support of it, and I just wanted to make sure that we followed exactly, and I was going to ask.
We have an emergency clause in our current financial fiscal policy.
And we have used it several times.
And we have used it before, and I.
That's fine.
But the thing is, it's not going to cost us dying to do this.
No, it's not.
Right.
And we, we don't put policies in to trap ourselves, we put policies in to hold ourselves accountable, but if we can't help a judge who's come before us, what, I mean.
I'm not saying.
I'm not saying you are, I'm simply saying.
I'm just saying, let's follow the procedure, and if there is a clause for emergency, then I'm, I'm for it.
We have it. We have a roll call. Any additional discussion?
I would like to add, well, that what I would plan to do if you approve this is I would write something up. It would base, it'd be pretty simple that she would be hired on a contract basis, that she would be on call for us as we need her, that, that, the funds that are available, which will be gone on the first of October. So it'd be pretty simple, and I'll ensure that she submits billing statements and they're itemized so that we're all can verify that the work is accounted for.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And then I'd just like to add that district court has also done temporary positions with grants before to keep up to date, so we have a system in place on making sure that we don't go over the grant tomorrow, so there would be no cost to the county.
Could we get a roll call, please?
Can, can I just ask?
Yep.
Do you have anything in place to get more people, more employees to come in and help you stay on top of this so we don't get behind again, or?
Yeah, we, we, we did make an offer, and it was accepted for the, the position vacated by Samantha Henderson, who's now the court administrator. That is a very difficult and challenging position, but we have somebody that accepted, and I think she's going through the screening process with the county, so hopefully she'll be joining us soon. And then the position that's being vacated this Friday, we did have an interview today that I understand went well, so I'm crossing my finger there because we really need to have all hands on deck right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you all.
All right, go ahead, dance for the roll call.
Melner?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. We're moving on. Department heads. Department head updates. Very good, we're moving on. General orders of business, unfinished business would be an RFP for the electric and water bid award. Do you have that information?
Yes.
I think we do. Go ahead.
That bid award was opened on Friday, September first, with attendees of Cory, our maintenance director, and Tracy Langton, our board secretary, and myself. Also, where attendees were the bidders. Between the conservation district and our maintenance director, the selection they choose to award the bet bids was the electric project is Billy Electric, and the water project was A-one Water, and that would be the recommendation, too.
I would need a motion to award these bids based on the recommendation of our, our maintenance director.
I will support.
Go ahead. Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Peterson, support by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion. None seen? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That these bids will be awarded. Item number two is, I put this one on as municipal council. I've been thinking about this since the last meeting, and I'm bringing it before you. Our prosecutor was elected to prosecute, and, and I think we're doing a service to her by making, here's the motion that I want one of you to make, or I'll make it myself. We've hired municipal attorney. Ashley's got to have a consistent person to go to. She goes first to Graham. Graham will tell her if we need MMR, MA, or we need Lauren, or whatever, but he is our corporate counsel, our municipal counsel. And so we need to restructure the policy to what I just simply said. You start first with Attorney Graham, and Mr. Graham will tell her where to go, whether it's MMR, MA, or whether it's to Lauren, or somewhere else? Okay, you're warned, that's your first warning. If you do it again, you get two of them, and you're going to be asked to leave the building. And I'm not kidding. You consider yourself warned once, sir.
I will make the motion.
And I'll support it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson, we have a second by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion.
That isn't what we agreed to.
No, I understand that.
We agreed to Ashley to go to the prosecutor first, and then MMR, MA if possible, and then Scott Graham.
I understand.
We switched it right around from what we had.
And I think I said that, I put some reflection into this, and I'm not just assuming, I've got to ask the board for a vote. One, Graham is a municipal attorney, and he's got heavy experience in the federal bar, and there's a reason for that, why I'm pushing that. I've done this before, every member of this board has done this before. You, you go through a vote, I'm prepared to discuss why I think we should do this. And I, I think it makes perfect sense based on our fiduciary obligations to our citizens. We need to get, first of all, our prosecutor, this is not about personality. She's got a lot going on, and I want to get her another person for her office and get them some more money. But if, if she's falling, if they're having a hard time keeping up with the workload based on being shorthanded, aren't we giving her kind of a bum deal by having her write opinions for us? That's my whole point to this. So do you have any questions? I need a quiet in the back of the room, please. Thank you.
I, I don't like something that is of this importance to vote on it immediately without having reflection for me to think about it and the consequences, the risks to the benefit of what we're trying to do here when I thought our consensus was exactly what Mr. Melner reiterated.
That was our consensus, and I'm asking us to revert.
I mean, how come all of a sudden we're just going to change it, and it wasn't given to us ahead of time? That's what I don't like. I'm, I'm not, it, it just doesn't.
It's been two weeks since our last meeting, and it's been heavy on my mind, thinking about.
Then why wasn't in the agenda?
I, it doesn't always work that way. I don't, I, I have no.
Okay, I.
There's no shenanigans going on, Steve. Sometimes I don't have necessarily time to.
I never accused of that.
Is there, is there a motion on the table right now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second, and this was a discussion phase, Mr. Peterson.
Okay. I'm, I'm just, I'm for this. I'm for this, but I, I would not be against, unless it's going to cause some kind of grief. Commissioner View, till the next meeting.
I, I have a problem with that, because we have, council needs to start moving on something immediately. But that's totally up to, I, I don't think there's ever going to be a point where we, people are, are pleased with this, and I, and I'm, I believe this is the right thing to do for the citizens of Escanaba, Delta County, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, if I heard you right, council has to start moving on something immediately. Why ain't we informed of that? Are you privy to more information than we are as the whole?
No, you know about it. In fact, you've communicated to people about it, but I'm not going to go into specifics on it.
Well, it's slipping my mind right now. Maybe I do know about it, but it doesn't seem to be an urgent issue with me right now.
Not everything is, we can necessarily approach in a community discussion.
Okay.
But you've been, you've been privy to it.
We've been discussing this.
For months.
Months, and this cleans it up, because we need to have, we need a, a third party to be looking at what's taking place here. It's, it's, there tends to be things that can be looked about as conflicting, because people are working with each other in the courthouse situation in the county. We need someone outside of that. And this is very important to do, and it's been, I believe it's been needed for, since I've been on this board.
Mr. Chair, can I make another comment?
Yeah, as much as you like, sir.
At the last meeting, I thought we set the procedure of how we wanted it. Why do we keep going from one to another and changing it around?
I don't think we kept going. I mean, we said it last time.
What was the policy last time?
Last time, like Mr. Melner said, we, we would use our prosecuting attorney as municipal counsel first, then, then we go to MMR, MA, and then we go to Scott Graham, and I started thinking about this. Our prosecutor was elected to prosecute. I don't know of a bunch of other counties in the state that have their prosecutor be their municipal counsel. And so keeping personalities out of this, I want to get what I can as far as fiduciary obligations to my constituency, the whole county, the best bang for the butt for the public. And you get somebody who doesn't have a horse in the race, it is very, I think, the best way to do this. We have somebody with a lot of experience.
Now, did we change the dollar value also that we?
That would take an RFP. We can't, there's nothing like, they're, they're simply telling Ashley who to go to and what order.
I don't see the big urgency in it, but in voting this in. I really don't see the big urgency in voting this in.
I, I don't place an urgency value on it. I've been thinking about it since the last meeting. I was. I was, I kind of came along to get along. I didn't want to deal with the fight and I was thinking about it and that's not what I feel is best for my constituents. Every commissioner will vote what they feel is best for their constituency, I assume. If I get defeated on this, I tried. If not, well, so be it. I feel I've done the right thing. It's not urgent.
Mr. Chair, did you, did you consider her information that she gave to the board dated September 10th, 2023? Did you read that, all that information she sent us?
I'm not sure what you're discussing.
The prosecutor sent us.
Prosecutor's office memo to all the commissioners, to Delta County Board of Commissioners, from prosecuting attorney of Delta County.
Yeah, but sure, I do read their stuff all the time. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well, all the information in there of how she does not think of it as a burden on her job to help us out in that first phase and how much money she saves by what she does if you were to hire somebody else, there's, there's all kinds of information that explains that.
The fiscal ramifications of it, I totally agree with. But again, I'll point out to the fact that I don't know prosecutor, criminal prosecutor serves as a municipal attorney. And I'm doing, I understand in some circles this is not popular, but I really, I've got to do what I feel is best for my constituents and that's, I believe this to be the case.
That very same information that Commissioner View is talking about and her budgetary requests and different things.
Yes.
Which indicates that she is one attorney light right now.
Right, but she talks about how her, how she saves the county money by that first phase of utilizing her, what it would cost if we had to hire an attorney and it's pretty mind boggling if you look at it.
Well, just, just, but according to her, what she put in her information was that we had, that it is taking so many hours each month from herself and another attorney and they're shorthanded and they're falling behind, you know, they need help, as we just had a district court up here, Judge Parks saying this, this removes that and gets, I believe, a better view of what's going on here in the county. Because you've got, when you have all these other things going here in the county, you're over, your vision is here. We need to have someone to look at it with a different set of eyes.
Let me bring one thing up. Back in 2010, when I first got on this commission, Burkhart as our attorney, we'd spend anywhere between 100 and 150 grand a year, which was a hefty, typically he would save us between 200 and 300 grand a year. And then somewhere around 16, 17, we decided to quit paying for a municipal attorney and then we started leaning on our prosecutors more. And there's a reason why municipal attorneys are there. I don't dispute that Lauren can save us some money here. This is not about personalities for me. And so I, I'm very comfortable coming back to this board and telling you why I would like to see this reversed and why I would like to go with a, an attorney with an extreme amount of experience in the Sixth Circuit who is a municipal attorney and he's strong. It's no condemnation of anybody else and it's not a personality attack on anybody else and that's where I'll stop.
Can, Mr. Chair, can we look at this and ask Lauren? Because her statement here says she's, her extra stipend of doubling up to 12,000 a year and she kind of bills it out at $195 an hour. She does about 15 hours a month from her office in the county of services. Some of it probably just routine maintenance and wordage and stuff like that. And I, I don't think we should hire someone at $195 an hour to do that kind of stuff when she is willing to do it, able to do it.
I think Mr. Graham is aware of the, this board's concerns about finances and he hasn't stuck us with bills yet. He's not going to as far as nearly Willie.
Yeah, you can see the bill.
What's your second warning for the audience, all right?
We haven't had.
Excuse, I'm sorry, sir, please. I'm not going to sit here and argue with you. I'll start warning you individually. You get two warnings and you'll be asked to leave the meeting. The chance to talk during general public comment, please take us up on that. Please, Mr. Melner, I'm sorry.
So, has he been working for the county already without a contract or what?
He has done pro bono services for us.
So he has been working for the county already then?
He's done some pro bono services for us. He's looked at a few things. Nothing has been officially adopted that he's done. He's not going to send us a bill for that.
What things have, has he been looking at?
You'll see one of them tonight under rules and procedures and he took a, when he was interested in, I don't know what this, why this is so confusing. He is not going to be sending us bills every time he gets on the phone with Ashley. That's just not going to happen. He's, he's not posturing for that. And if you want some type of estimate towards what this is going to cost, he can do that. Like if you call him and ask, we have this situation, he'll tell you in terms of hours what it'll cost.
Okay. I just, Lauren texted me and she's happy to explain any of her, any questions she do have.
She's always been. I mean, great.
Just personally, she just texted me, so I just wanted to share that.
If I may, this, this, this isn't, or is this going to be something that, like he's at every meeting or we?
I haven't asked for that. I mean, the city of Escanaba has their council, municipal council at every meeting. If he was to do that, he would have to zoom in or whatever, whatever, virtual. If the board ever wanted that, it'd be possible.
But, but I guess what I'm getting at is when you had Mr. Burkhart here, Attorney Burkhart, and it was $100,000 or whatever.
Sure. He wasn't at every meeting. He came in and he would render opinions upon request. I remember one former commissioner asked for an opinion and we got a bill for $3,400. Burkhart seemed expensive, but he saved us twice what he charged us. I mean, and that's, that's provable. You don't take my word for that. That can be vetted. He saved us a lot of money. I'm, I'm comfortable with this and I don't, if you want to vote on it, you want to vote against it, fine. I, no harm, no foul. I, we have a prosecutor that should prosecute and.
Can we hear from her if she's willing to call in? Is that what you said, Ashley?
I really don't, we can, but what do you want to ask? This is not an issue.
I just want her to make a comment on what we're trying to do tonight to see where she stands. Because maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I don't think it's an issue of right or wrong. What I want is our prosecutor to be free to prosecute and I want a municipal attorney to serve the citizens when we need that person.
So do I, but I don't want it to be the number one first person. That's it. I, I, I agree with you. We need somebody when we need somebody, but not to be the number one person in our county. My, my.
Okay, I need it quiet in the audience, please.
I feel my constituents would want us to be as frugal as possible and when it came to the point we needed someone with the expertise, we would hire that third-party attorney that was expert in that, that area.
I have a different way, I appreciate that, Commissioner, but I have a different way of working at it, looking at it.
These arguments keep, we keep doing these arguments. We're circling and circling.
All right.
I think it's time to call a question.
Anything else? Support. The.
What the chair makes.
Policy would be, guys, I don't want to have to do this, but if you force me to do it, you will not impede the work of the people from getting done. That is going to be the final call on that. You will be held accountable for it and asked to leave. Policy would be having our administrator for issues that need municipal council contact Scott Graham first. Graham would indicate whether she would talk to MMR, MA, or possibly our prosecuting attorney. And that's, I stand by that and I, I don't know another county that's doing the exact opposite of that, which would be, some of the counties downstate or whatever might be so resource depleted that they have no choice, but I believe we have the resources to, to do this properly. All right, let's go with a roll call, please.
First, we have to call a question.
All right, we have, you want to call?
I made that.
Okay, Mr. Baron, Mr. Peterson supported it.
Okay.
All those in favor of moving up, do you need a roll call? Do we need to vote on the question?
Yes.
All right, voting on calling the question, all those in favor signify by saying.
Can I, Mr. Chair, what is call the question? I thought that was just that.
That ends debate. So we're, Mr. Baron called the question to end the debate.
Okay, all right, I guess we can.
Okay, so we have a roll call on calling the question.
Okay. Melner?
No.
View?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes, thank you. All right, then we have a motion on the floor. I would need a motion on the floor to reverse our policy. Scott Graham would be our municipal attorney. He would direct administration where to go from that point.
Don't we already have the motion on the floor?
That was on the, oh, we do have the motion then. All right, I apologize. Who made the motion?
Commissioner Peterson.
Okay, and it's seconded by Commissioner Baron. All right, roll call, please.
Okay, so now this is on.
Reversing the policy on municipal council.
Can you, can you read that word for word for us one more time? Because I was confused last time when we voted on something and I wanted to make sure I hear it right.
Okay, it was moved by Commissioner Peterson and seconded by Commissioner Baron to restructure the council to have municipal attorney Graham and decide whether it would go to MMR prosecutor or Graham to handle.
That's fine. It's a restructuring of our corporate council. All right.
No.
View?
No.
Baron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes. Very good. Under new business, this is item 0.5. I want to read you this. I need it quiet in the audience, please. Delta County Commission rules of procedure, this is what I'm asking you to consider and adopt. In order for the commission to effectively transact business of the people, the chair is charged with maintaining an orderly environment within the public meetings of the Delta County Commission. Members of the audience should refrain from speaking out of order and attempting to influence discussion or debate of the commissioners. Distracting or attempting to intimidate members of the commission is unacceptable and individuals speaking out of order will be warned by the chair to maintain order so that the business of the people can be attended to. If an individual is warned more than twice for intentionally speaking out of order, that person can be asked to leave the meeting by the chair. A person asked to leave the meeting by the chair can appeal the chair's decision simply by standing up saying, I appeal your decision. At that point in time, a straight up and down vote by the commission would take place without discussion. The county board would vote on the chair's decision to have the person leave. They would either accept the chair's decision or overrule the chair. If the audience becomes out of order, the people attending the meeting can be warned that, in order to maintain the order. If the county board of commissioners is unable to conduct its business for the people of Delta County due to the unruly nature of an audience, according to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, the room may be cleared. If a particular meeting is contentious, it is strongly recommended that the chair call a temporary recess to kind of de-escalate the situation, but we've already been doing that. Here, you have a copy of this. This is right from council. This has been tested and tried in federal court. If you have questions, I would be happy to entertain some questions. If not, what is your pleasure, commissioners?
I'd make a motion that we adopt this.
We have a motion by Commissioner Baron to adopt this offering by corporate council or municipal council, Graham, to our rules and procedures.
I would support it.
We have a support by Commissioner Peterson, but additional discussion. Mr. View?
You think I'm going to say something right away?
Well, I was curious if you were curious about it all.
I am, but this was just handed to me less than an hour ago. I have no chance to review it and look at how it would fit into our basic rules of procedure for public comment. Does that have any play into this?
No, this is.
Is this above and beyond? We don't have no rules of procedure for order of business when it's, gets ruly or something?
We have rules and procedures for personal attacks. I haven't really been enforcing them. What I will do is start strictly enforcing them and this is more based on people speaking out of order. Some of the meetings, as you know, have gotten quite sporty.
Oh, they got.
Are we still going to keep the, what we have rules for public comment in?
Yeah, this would be in addition to the rules of public comment.
And we don't get no, no chance to actually think about this and look at it and at our, see, I didn't know where you were going with this at the last meeting, so I thought I would wait till the board packet came out, you know, Wednesday or Thursday and do a little checking on it and having this just at, at the 12th hour was, it's very difficult to.
I don't have a problem if you wait till the next meeting for this. I'm not, I mean, I've been dealing with these meetings for, you know, since January 3rd. If you need some time to digest it or any of the members of the board.
And who wrote this?
Pardon me?
Who wrote this?
Attorney Graham.
Was.
Yes, he's wrote for free.
Okay, I'm just asking.
No, he's not going to, Bill was for it, he wrote it for free.
Is this, is this the version that Lauren looked at?
This was the one that I submitted to admin in the.
She was going to write something with a later date for it.
I believe the sheriff and the prosecutor have seen it.
They both seen it.
Yeah. If you want to wait, I don't have.
Well, you got a motion and it's seconded.
If, I think if you really felt strongly enough, I, I can't speak for the commissioners, but if you, gentlemen, additional discussion.
I think this needs to be put in immediately. We've already seen tonight, a number, this afternoon, late afternoon, outbursts from the audience. It's been happening for many months. This gives the chair a much stronger position. I believe we need to get this into effect immediately.
This has nothing to do with people who disagree or criticize us on policy. That needs to be maintained and that needs to be, this does not eliminate, somebody's a right to talk. I've heard, you know, rumors in the community that we're trying to scuttle people's First Amendment rights. We're not doing that. We haven't, we're giving you two opportunities, one at the beginning of the meeting, one at the end of the meeting, and if we were trying to do that, we would be looking, I'm not looking to take something away, I just want, and decorum in a meeting, it doesn't mean we all have to sing kumbaya. It simply puts a structure to our policies. If you want to, anybody else, please? We have a motion on the floor, but if, you know, if you want to wait, Mr. View, you can, you can plead that and I.
Well, just vote. I mean, we have the motion and to second it, I think we'll follow it through and see where it goes.
Is there anything in here you have a problem with or concerns about?
I haven't had a chance to oversee it, so I'll, I'll take my chances and we can vote.
Commissioners, anybody else? Very well, then let's do a roll call.
Melner?
No.
View?
No.
Baron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yep.
And Moyle?
Yes. Lightning didn't come out of the sky. We're not stopping people. If you want to review this and you want to suggest a change to it, Commissioner, I would be open to hear it.
Thank you.
What else may I have, your attention please?
Sir, you're out of order.
I maybe, you can kick me out.
Sir, I don't watch, I really don't want to. You're out of order.
I think you're a bunch of.
You're out of order, sir.
You're running a canned report.
Sir.
Point of order.
Point of order. If you don't sit down, I'm going to have to recess the meeting and have you escorted out.
That's fine.
I'd, no, I'd really rather not do that, Mr. Larson. Please sit down, sir. Please sit down, sir. You are stopping the progress of the work of the people, sir. Please sit down, sir. Sir, please leave the room. I'm asking you now to leave the room. You're out of order. I know what you're doing. You're stopping the work of the people from being done. Leave the room, please. You're out of... All right, we, I need to recess the meeting. I've got to call pull-up safety. We'll recess the meeting for five minutes. Use the bathroom if you'd like.
Hello, my name is Kelly Bangen. I'm here for recess. I just want everybody to know that Reed Hyken is Commissioner Moyle's best friend, and he's been charged by the state of Michigan for stalking. Scott Graham is his attorney, and he has a hearing on October 3rd for a bond violation and also trial for his stalking on November 3rd. And Scott Graham is his attorney, so I'd just like everybody to pay special close attention to how, when this goes down,
if he's in the area, it better not be on the county dial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
You don't have to say anything to get kicked out. You can stand up and... I'm not just, no, 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 I'm not talking to you. I'm just saying, please, be quiet so you don't get kicked out. But you can stand up and come down, come up, you know, meet faces. Just don't make any noise, okay? Please. Don't disrupt the meeting. Well, anyway, is that... Now it's in recess. No, we're not allowed to ask each other questions because, no, no, not in during the... Because it's...
Oh, no, but I mean, right now, we're, right now, we have a little recess right now. You could talk right now.
Go ahead. Yeah, same.
Board of the line illegal.
Kumbaya.
I, I was... What can we do?
We used to do that.
Aye.
Right now, we're in recess.
With that, the one that they passed?
Mr. Moyle, you're being recorded, just so you know.
Yep. Okay.
Can't talk. Can't talk, Kelly.
Say anything, because people are just vicious. I know what you and David have been through all this time, you know. Steve. I know, it's, it's, don't worry, I'm getting it. Steve.
Come back in the ward.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh. It, it takes me a little, little bit to get it.
We are back in session. Board of Commissioners, meeting will come to order, please. We have the payment of our bills as our next item.
I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following, and the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the climates for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills is $1,112,814.29. Commissioner expenses of $2,690.49.
Gentlemen?
I move we pay the bills.
Motion by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion. Roll call, clerks, please.
Melner?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yep.
And Moyle?
Yes. All right, very good. The financial year '24 MVAA grant agreement.
This grant agreement was awarded to us, and we just need approval, or the acceptance approved.
I will make the...
The total grant amount is $78,550. $50,000 of that is going to be coming upfront to the county. The remaining portion will be on reimbursement base.
We have a motion by Commissioner Melner.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. Item number three is the MIDC attorney contracts.
These contracts are approved year after year, depending on the attorneys. The only other changes are what's necessary for the MIDC grant, which was presented earlier in the year to the commission. So I just need approval on these to send to our MIDC attorneys.
Commissioners?
I make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion.
Can I just say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so on this last item, that was the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency grant, and then on this one, it's the Michigan Indigent...
Defense.
Defense.
Council. I'm sorry, commission.
Defining the acronyms. All right, very good.
Sorry.
All right.
So everybody knows what we're talking about.
We have a motion on the floor, and a second, and clarification on the acronyms. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. North Shore Network Grants.
The North Care Network Grants, I would like this to be tabled for further information needed.
Aye, we need a motion, commissioners.
I'll make that motion. Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson with support by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion. All those in favor of tabling this for additional information, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that would be tabled. Item number five is the 2023 winter tax rate.
This was given out by our equalization contractor, Shalise Northrup. The only items that have changed for the 2023 tax rate request is the jail bond millage actually went down .12 of a mil, so.
All right, very well. Do we need a motion to accept the schedule? The 2023 winter tax rate. And how much is it? Can you repeat that again?
It's going to be .72.
Okay.
Is the jail bond. The recycling is .3, 911, .75. Community action agency is .8, and law enforcement, 1.3.
Commissioners? Any motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Melner.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion, please. All those in, let's do a roll call, please.
Sure. Melner?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes. Item six, changes made to the recommended budget.
These are changes from the last meeting to this meeting that were made after the second review of department heads.
They are listed anywhere?
Yes, they're listed in the board packet.
All right, very good. Gentlemen?
And they're for all funds.
I need board motion for this, or board action for this? Need a motion to accept the changes made.
I make the motion.
All right, Commissioner Barron would move, supported by Commissioner Peterson, additional discussion regarding the changes made to the recommended budget. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good. The financial year '24 proposed budget book presentation.
I'm pulling that up right now. So our budget summary, these are the major funds. The major funds are our general fund, our rural patrol fund, and our airport fund. As you can see between these funds, we have $11.9 million in personnel costs. This includes the salaries in the benefit packages. In addition to this, there's $6.7 million of non-personnel costs. Non-personnel costs include contractual services, appropriations, utility costs, debt payments, and all required equipment and infrastructure. This year, the average permanent Delta County employee earns about $55,309 a year. If the health insurance and are part of the county pension retirement system, the county will be required to contribute an average of $43,191 in benefits. So for every $1, it's 78 cents. We currently have 128 permanent elected employees. So the total cost of the average employee is $98,499. Here is how the general fund budget is broke down. So we have numerous departments in our general fund budget. We have the sheriff's department and corrections, the prosecutors and all the courts, that's district circuit and probate court, front of the court. We do transfers to help subsidize other funds, such as like the airport, rural patrol we've done in the past, building and zoning. And then we also have our maintenance and custodial, the board administration, IT department, clerk's office, which also has the elections and registered deeds. We also do an outside appropriation to the mental health and substance abuse, our equalization and GIS system. The health department, we do an appropriation to our Delta County treasurer. We have a general insurance cost, miscellaneous operating expenditures, emergency management, other appropriations to departments, veteran affairs, medical examiner, MSU extension, and then the audit. Here is a breakdown of all the employees from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24. We have added three employees. As you can see, our employees are the two for the parks systems. We did drop down one employee in the probate juvenile court. The position is just open, but currently the judge has decided not to fill that position, so I did not count it. Also, our sheriff administration has dropped down one personnel. They're going to be switched over into the general fund part. Let's see. And then we also have an addition of our airport, and that is going to be our designated ramp observer that was approved tonight. And we added two employees in the childcare, and it's not really adding. What happened was is these two employees were funded under a different fund, not the childcare, so they're just moving from one department into another. These are a list of our mandated services and programs. We also have some partially funded grant programs, such as the sheriff marine, our emergency management, CAC, Veteran Services, Michigan Indigenous Defense Commission that we just discussed. And we also do some non-mandated programs. We have our appropriation to the airport, the parks, MSU extension, the zoning administration, animal shelter, GIS through QPAD and other memberships, such as the QPAD, UPCAP, Chamber, EDA, and MAC. So our general fund revenue, we did decrease $318,000 in our revenue, but the reason for this is because our American Resource Plan funds are starting to decrease. So you're going to see this over the next few years. In the beginning, we had a lot of projects. We've spent the money now, so now we're only taking in larger projects. Next year, we have a few projects that are going to be starting up. So if you look at 1.6, I'm sorry, $1.4 million, that is our ERP. It says use of fund balance, because that's where our ERP money is sitting right now. So here is for our board of commissioners. Increased about $10,000. The increase is mostly due to annual wages, health insurance increase, and then, of course, the travel and lodging. Our circuit court has increased $27,000. Again, I mean, it's expected. It's all wage-approved changes, election of plans for health insurance. However, our jury expense has increased, and also transcripts that are required to be for the trials that are requested by the judge have increased over the year. District court. District court has went up $9,000. And you'll not see what has just been approved tonight. You'll see that in Fund 297 or 298. I can't remember which one. But you will not see that in the general fund, because that's a grant position now. So you'll see that there was a decrease in health and dental insurance, and that's just due to the annual increases and with the turnover of employees. Front of the court. Front of the court decreased about $43,000, and this is due to health and dental insurance. So they had some employees that are not taking our dental and health insurance, so... That would show there. We have probate court. You're going to see a significant increase in probate court and the non-personnel expenditures. This reason is it was requested by Judge Lund to redo all the carpeting, office chairs, tables, and jury chairs and tables. So we couldn't, I told him that we weren't be able probably to do the whole project that he was requesting in this budget year, but we'll have a good start on it. If you've ever been to probate court, it is one half of the wing, so, of the hallway. Juvenile court, probate court, nothing much changed in that area. Elections, we see a $45,600 increase, and this is in the printing, and this is because of the upcoming elections that will be happening in this year. Not a huge increase in the county clerk's office, $6,500. As you can see, it's all salary increases. Administration and finance. So we see a decrease of about $100,000, and this is the change of the new, myself is being paid at a lesser rate. And then also, my old position as controller is no longer going to be in status, but there is going to be an HR person. So with all of this happening, that is the change. However, I do take health insurance, and I do budget that the person that's coming in is going to take health insurance, and I always estimate it at the highest costing health insurance for the county. As below, you can see it itemized. IT, oh, and then another reason why the administration has decreased. Brandon used to be recorded, our IT director, used to be recorded in that department. Well, now we have moved him over into the technology department. So you're going to see a large significant increase here, because both employees are now being recorded here. But you see a significant decrease in the non-personnel expenditures, and this is because of the American Rescue Funds. Because he's no longer going to be spending that from prior year to this year. Equalization, no significant changes there. Prosecutor's office. You had received the request from Prosecutor Wickman, so I've incorporated into the budget. Her request is for the chief assistant salary to be increased, also along with assistant prosecuting salary. There will be, we used to receive a PAM. I can't remember what the acronym stands for, but internship. And it's been out for the past two years, and now they're bringing it back. So we'll have an internship come in. There is a decrease, though, in the health insurance due to elections, and we did increase the maintenance, and it's to replace the carpeting of the office that she requested. And the reason for these significant increases on the attorney's side is it's a nationwide pandemic. You, you just can't find prosecutors. Nobody wants to come over here, as you've seen in the MIDC contract, which is grant-funded. The state is paying $141 an hour for these court-appointed attorneys. So we're really having a hard time finding nationwide prosecutors. So we're really having a hard time finding nationwide prosecutors. And then we're also even seeing in the appellate court system for attorneys because that is not a grant-funded position. So hopefully in the near future, the state would assist in this. I've heard a little bit of talkings about it. Registered deeds, decreased in salaries, and the reason why we see a decrease is we have a new employee in there. So she's starting out at the baseline instead of being at the top tier. County treasurer, just election of health insurance. Maintenance and custodial. Non-personnel, so you'll see a significant increase, I'm sorry, I have it in red, I apologize for that, significant increase in non-personnel, and that is ARP money. That's the remaining appropriation that he has, and it's going to help with the relocation of the utilities. It's going to help with the remaining part of the ARP, the multi-use storage building that's being built behind the service center here. And then also just an increase in wages due to maintenance personnel working more at the courthouse. What happens with the maintenance personnel, they can charge their times between the sheriff's department, the airport, the courthouse, and just the service center. And the way the trend's been going, they're spending more time at the courthouse, and that makes sense because with all the projects that we've been doing. Sheriff administration, this is going to be our sheriff, undersheriff, our office manager and the part-time office manager, along with our three security guards over at the courthouse. As you'll see, the increase of salaries and benefits due to that position. Marine, you see a significant decrease in the marine, and this is due to the airboat balanced that we've already paid down on it. And also, we had that big repair, do you remember? It was about $24,000 or $20,000 that the board had approved for the airboat earlier this year. Corrections. So our corrections department, you'll see a significant decrease, and it seems like with the medical expenditures in the new contract, I'm sorry, yeah, a decrease. And then a decrease in salaries and wages, and this is because we had some retirements this year. So again, personnel's starting at the base. I called it kind of miscellaneous fund. This is our audit costs, which there was no significant changes, our insurance publications, soldier burials. We didn't have any equipment purchases. We kept our mail and postage. We've been staying within the $10,000 range. Our human resources fund, this is a new depart, or I'm not, sorry, department. This is a new department that I created. Just to understand what goes on in the human resources, how much are we spending with new hire expenditures, professional consulting fees? These professional consulting fees are non-labor matters. Funds have been privately used for opinions requested that we had to use earlier this year. And here's all of our transfers, how we subsidize other departments or other funds. Like I mentioned earlier, we have the airport fund. There was no change. Our building and zoning fund. And our capital outlay fund, there's a significant decrease, and that is again, American rescue plan funds. We will no longer be using. Our childcare fund, we are at, it's a significant decrease. The judge had mentioned that 70, or will be reimbursed 75% October 1. I think it was said during our personnel committee meeting also. Some external appropriations that we do, there's been no changes in there. Same thing with all of these other external appropriations, and you can see all the different entities that the Delta County assists. We, I mean, we assist fire departments, the EDA. We see a decrease in the health department. This is just a standard, it's never been really changed much. And you'll see a significant decrease here in the Delta Conservation District, which is expected. We will no longer be contracted with them as of 1-1. And our internal appropriations, so I have moved that Conservation District appropriation into the Delta County Parks. It's a fund that's going to be 208, and you'll see a decrease in the service center transfer, so they did not need as much subsidized from us this year. Other general fund departments, not very large departments, but we don't want to forget about them is our emergency management department. This is Mr. Guyer's area. We have our ME, our medical examiner, veterans affairs, and that's Dave Xavier, our jury commission, drain commissioner, record copying. Record copying is, it's a department that we buy all our paper from, so we did increase it this year. We were supporting a lot more departments. Some of them were purchasing paper on their own, and we decided it's cheaper if we just buy a big lump sum. We have our animal shelter, extension service, and parks and rec. And this parks and rec was the pension for back when the county previously was running the department, the parks. Sheriff road patrol. This is a countywide millage, and as you can see, we decreased the local services 55. I believe that was a clerical error that was recorded in last fiscal year that has now changed. And our transfers in, the road patrol didn't need as much of a subsidy from the general fund this year, so that was really good to see that their revenues, they can start supporting a little bit more of themselves. And as you can see, I gave a summary of significant changes. So the significant changes, decrease due to salaries and wages, or increase, I'm sorry. And then we increased overtime. It seemed like there was a lot more overtime this year. We decreased for health and dental insurance, increase for retirement. We decreased computer maintenance, and we also decreased the American rescue plan projects that have already been completed. This is just a lineup of our officers. So we have our 15 officers for the county. Building and zoning. So building and zoning, you'll see from fiscal year '22, we do not have that nominee contract anymore. See what else, any other significant? This is the first full year that we actually had plumbing and mechanical permitting, so you'll see about $30,000 or $27,000 of increases. Also, we increased a lot of, a subsidy from the general fund of 64,000. This is due to building and zoning administrator needs a truck for, I was running right now, so I did increase for him to start saving up about $20,000 on a vehicle. And then also, you'll see an increase of 51,000 of salaries due to a full-time mechanical and plumbing inspector, and then the associated fringe. Airport fund. Airport salaries due to annual increase, so we actually are going back to the base for our new employees that will be coming forward. And then decrease of overtime reimburse from the airline. It didn't seem that they had as much overtime reimbursement, so what happens is the flight comes in so late, about 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, and sometimes it's just, it's on until 10 o'clock. So for that hour, we have to pay our employees overtime, but it's not our fault that the plane's late. So the airport made a deal with SkyWest that they'll reimburse us our employees' wages for staying over when they're delayed. So just a little insight on there. We decreased the match funds, and what match funds are is the American, or I'm sorry, the airport improvement, capital improvement plan. And it is when the federal government pays 90%, the state pays five, and the county pays five, but I do believe that they switched it to seven and three now going forward. So our match funds have decreased. Service center. Again, this is where all of our maintenance employees, and then last year I had several of them kind of recorded over at the other departments, and as you can see here, it doesn't really affect it, and, but over at road patrol and stuff, you'll see that the decrease in salaries over there. We also have the American rescue plan funds decreased over there because of projects that have been completed. So that also hits the revenue side because it's going to be transferred coming in from the general fund, and then also hits the expenditure side because we're paying out the cost. Other non-general funds that I'd like to mention is our capital outlay fund. Huge change there again because we don't have our large projects. They should be finished up for fiscal year '23, at least the majority of the cost. Our PFC, which is our passenger facility charge airport improvement fund, this is pretty stagnant, how, because we had lost our plan back in for 2003, but we will be gaining it back here in '24. And then our jail debt, building debt, as you'll see that we are going to be paying more of a principal in fiscal year '24. These are proprietary funds. Proprietary funds are like business-run funds. That is our foreclosure fund. You'll see our first line here is our net position. This is like our fund balancer. So it's pretty stagnant, no increases, not very many changes that are happening there. Same thing with our DTRF, our delinquent tax revolving fund. This is where the treasurer purchases all the tax rolls from the townships that they have not collected on the taxes to make them whole, and then we collect for the delinquent tax. Our jail commissary fund does increase. This is revenue collected from the inmates for commissary items at the jail, phone cards, vending, all that kind of stuff. Below are our special revenue funds. We have the MIDC grant fund. We did increase the grant for this year. Our Title III forest project, these are for local fire-wise plan in the national forestland. So any of these townships that have forests that are touching or within national forestland there can apply for these funds. Paul Guyer takes care of this fund. We have the front of the court fund. This is from the state to be used for non-federal funded, federal funded services such as custody imperative time activities. And we have circuit court counseling. This is from the state to be used for certain services such as mediation, custody imperative time evaluations, community action. This is just the millage, it's in and out. Whatever we receive in, we give out to the community action. Same thing with the sanitary landfill, this is our Delta solid waste. Whatever we bring in, we give out. Hannibal. So when all these local entities, I can't say municipalities, but local entities like a church or what other one did we have recently? I think Commissioner View has approved a few of them. They, they're just requests for 2% money that everybody talks about. So we recorded in this fund, majority of the time, whatever comes in goes directly out unless the county requests some funding, and that's very small. We rarely do that. This is the sheriff's donation and search and rescue fund. It's discretionary funding, but for the sheriff. So if you decide to turn in any muddle over at Copland's, you can donate it to the sheriff's fund, and it goes right here, and the sheriff will utilize it as necessary. PA 124 is a state fund for training purposes of the corrections officers. We have our upset fund. Not very many changes there. We also have our county survey and remont, which is a grant-funded remont limitation program that surveys corners. We have the registered deeds of automation fund. We have our CPL license, but not very many changes that are happening. Our law library, this is where it's open to the public to be used for legal textbooks and digital library access. We have our soldier sailor and relief. I did increase this by two grand. I know it's been a hot topic recently, and with $4,000, I figured $6,000, they can do a lot more, maybe help a little bit more veterans. Our childcare fund, this is the 75-25% fund that I had talked about earlier with probate court. We have our sobriety court. This is the scale grant. This is what Judge Parks was talking about earlier. I believe Eric was either talking about the North Care Sobriety Court. One's scale, one's North Care, one's run by the federal, and then one is run by a local And that is all I have for you. Do you have any questions?
No questions. Steve, any questions?
I have a couple, if you don't mind.
Not at all, please.
I hate to ask, but it's, I didn't have much time to read you all of this, and I went through the sheets you gave before the.
That one is, if you don't live it, it's very hard to read, I understand.
I do appreciate this, and it gives me a better insight, but I didn't have much time to look at it because it wasn't available.
Right. And if you look, I didn't read about them, but if you look in front of all these booklets, you'll see where it gives a little snippet, a little summary of what each department or fund and what it's used for. So I really enjoyed this book. I was introduced to this book in my first couple months on the job, and it really opened my eyes to the county, so.
Well, what I, what I actually looked at was first off, the veteran service officer.
Yep.
Because that's been a lot of discussion since I've been on the board.
Mm-hmm.
Turn this on.
Oh, I guess I could hear, sorry.
Yeah. I looked at that grant thing that we signed, agreed to tonight, and that's like 70-some-thousand dollars that's going to be given to them through the state.
Yes.
And we've heard the rumblings of a one-tenth of a tax for support of this. I don't know how much that would generate, but I.
It was like 130,000?
133.
133.
I've talked to Dave too, and I've talked to other people at the Veterans Administration, the new one at the old Peninsula Credit Union, or whatever that was.
Yeah, the new vet center.
And then I talked to a bunch of vets, and I, and I went through, walked through with a vet the, three weeks ago, just to sit in and see how Dave does his, his thing. And I, I really believe that it's, it's time to rally around our vets and give them some more money right now, more than what you're offering, because he is overloaded.
Right.
I don't know if we can afford another veteran service officer to be trained.
So I had not budgeted for that.
No, I know, I know.
No, but we can always look into it and see if we can.
What I'm recommending is if the commission, the next meeting, can we add, can we do discretionary spending on something that we feel we need?
Yes.
Yeah, you can always amend this budget throughout the year.
Well, I hate doing that once you get something set up, but I, I think this program is really important in that I know we could use two, two officers there.
Well, like I had said earlier in my little, he does everything from, I mean, from the VA helping sign off veterans with VA to personal finance to help a veteran to understand how to get day-to-day through his bills because he only has X amount of dollars, and he, I mean, he goes from that, he helps them with cooking. I mean, he went through a whole list of items. I absolutely understand. I spent three hours with him on Friday.
But I thought the best to serve the vets right now at the, for the time being was maybe we could afford a clerical help for him, full-time secretary or something.
I think he wants another VSO.
I know, I know what he wants, but the thing is, if we start out slow and give him a little bit to loosen the load where it doesn't take three, four weeks for appointments, and somebody can coordinate all the office work and do all that, that's a first step instead of going right to the full-blown 100% of what he would need. That's what I'm, I'm trying to figure out if we can do something like that.
Okay, so you wanted to be funded through just the county, no public? Yep, no public act.
I mean, how, what is our fund balance at this year compared to last year? Do you, is it like 13?
Okay, so you wanted to be funded through just the county, no public? Yep, no public act.
I mean, what is our fund balance at this year compared to last year? Do you, is it like thirteen million or seven million, or what is it?
Um.
I didn't see that. I didn't notice that.
It was in the very first slide. Let me, oh, went too far.
I want to know if we're declining or gaining from last year to this year's spending. Do we have funds in there to do that is what I'm thinking.
Oh, I mean, yeah.
He deserves it. I mean, that department deserves it.
I mean, it depends on where you're at, like what you wanted to start at, I guess, for me to say that. I mean, are you starting at thirty, forty thousand? Are you starting at sixty, seventy thousand?
You mean for that position or? Whatever, whatever the normal position is to keep somebody in there, that we pay other secretaries to do that type of clerical work.
Do a comparison of other clericals.
I really would like to see that happen. I mean, instead of going full-blown right now, but over the next couple of years, we can probably get him up to speed to where he needs to be. But we have to start somewhere. And when I look, seventeen hundred dollars difference isn't very much for what he's doing. And the veterans need it. That was the number-one complaint, is they couldn't get in there and they feel the anxiety of waiting. And I think Dave, Dave needs that right now, that department, that Veterans Service Office. I'd like to start out with that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just throwing it all to the commission right now.
I like your ideas, Commissioner. I'm wondering if you would be, if you need to get him back in here again, would he be better served by office help or even a part-time VSO? What would he like more? That's the one thing that, you know, because he'll know where we can help him the best.
Well, I know that. Well, he's going to want to be a VSO officer, but I, I'm trying to compromise here. Instead of going a hundred percent with a more expensive thing, let's work our way into getting him up to speed in the next two, three years. And starting out by giving him more time to service the vets by having someone do a lot of the secondary stuff. Because he's trained to talk to vets. He shouldn't have to answer the phones as much, make the appointments and stuff. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Is, was there a talk, I know there was talk about bringing a millage to the people in the next election?
Um, yeah, we, so Dave would like to, instead of enacting, saying that the commissioner says one-tenth or anything, he would just like to have the point zero zero two-two, which equals to thirty thousand dollars millage. He did some research in other areas that have the amount of veterans that we have in this area only need about thirty thousand dollars. And this is the emergency relief only.
Okay.
That's all it would be utilized for. So he thinks that thirty thousand to start off. I mean, if we need more, if we need less, we can adjust, but. So, yeah, there was, that's the only talk. I did not put it in this budget because it hasn't been approved in any way, so.
Right. Well, that was a hot topic, so I thought I'd bring that all.
Yep, absolutely. And I was glad that I told him thank you for, you know, having three hours with me because I know how he's, how busy he is. But he was able to walk me around the area. Have a beautiful kitchen and conference room. And so, I mean, we have the opportunity to get a lot of programs in this area. One of the programs he talked about was like food cards and just helping veterans sign up for that. And he just doesn't have time to do all avenues that can be covered.
The other thing that I, and I'm only looking at things that we had issues with. I mean, you know, it was the technology department. There was a capital outlay of a hundred and ninety-two, two ninety-three.
Okay.
Was, was anything in there to address the Zoom issue, or what is that for?
Um, that is for all technology throughout Delta County. So that's renewing computer implementations, our BSNAs software.
Equipment and software and licenses.
Yeah, it's just like our, pretty much our subscriptions. A lot of it is subscriptions that we have to pay for to keep going.
And can any additional funds be used for Zoom? Can we look at that?
I did not budget for additional funds to be used for Zoom.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking because now's the time to get some of the issues people were concerned about. So I thought I'd bring that up too. Just give me a second. If somebody else has some, I just want to read what else I.
Commissioners? Oh, Mr. Melner?
Did we up the prosecutor for the help she does here?
Yeah, the civil from six to twelve.
Six to twelve, okay.
Yeah, that was the other thing. That letter, did we also increase to maintain the assistant prosecutor and stuff like that?
And the chief and then the assistant to bring somebody in.
Were met?
Yep.
Great.
That was all in there.
All right.
But I didn't see the civil.
And what about, what about our retirement, other post-employment benefit, leave accrual and stuff like that? Does that stay about the same, or did we, did we pay any of that down, like on the retirement?
We did not do any large payments. We do monthly payments.
But where is that percentage now for that?
Seventy-two.
Well, seventy-two. And where was it last year?
Around the same amount, seventy, seventy-two.
So we're just holding a status quo?
Yep, we're status quo.
And is that, is that good, or, I mean, tell me.
The greatest, I mean, I, back in, what was it, twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen? I think we were up to eighty percent. We have dropped.
Why, why are we dropping?
Because the employees at that time were at a certain rate. Now they've been working so many years, their rate has increased, so their pension increased.
What's our strategic plan for getting that to where it should be, or does it matter?
The prior commission approved to reimburse ourselves for government services of two million dollars and then using what we would have paid out in that two million dollars for government services to pay down the pension plan.
And then when?
And we have not made that payment as of yet.
Oh.
So you should see at least a large spike. I know I did some inquiry with MERS on how much it would cost the county to come up to eighty percent. It was like three-point-one-six million dollars. So, I mean, with the two million dollar payment, we'll see a significant increase. It might not be eighty, but.
Okay, well, I think that's important for looking forward because when I'm gone or when this commission is not here, five years somehow, what decisions we make will be what's happening in the community. The other thing that I was looking at is, I always hate debt.
I know.
And I try to run a debt-free life, but it's difficult, and I know for government, it's hard too. But is, how much debt do we actually have? Just the jail or do we have a bunch of other stuff?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we don't need a debt reduction plan?
I mean, we have our pension debt and our jail.
Unfunded mandate is the greatest.
Yeah, and then with our millage, well, you've seen that our millage decreased. And the reason why the decrease is.
That was good.
I know. But so we just have to keep fluctuating the millage so that we're only recuperating the amount of the principal and interest payment for our millage debt or for our debt, sorry.
Okay, and then I, then I noticed also for capital improvements and buying equipment and that, you told people to save for a car. Do we have any major things that we're saving for that wasn't presented here that we are putting money aside for, like repairs and what else is there? What, copying machine? Well, I'm just saying, I mean, is all that budgeted or do we have to?
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to get a quick course real good on where we are with all this stuff.
I'm trying to think of ones that I didn't mention. I think for custodial, we did put some money in for, I believe it was some sort of tractor. We put that and also in the parks fund.
I know they could use another loader at the airport too.
Yeah, it wasn't a tractor, I'm sorry, it's a skid steer.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not a heavy machine operator, sorry. Even though if that's considered heavy machinery, but that was it.
What about facilities as a, you know, so that we don't have to go back to the taxpayers? Are we keeping up on?
Well, that's what we just did, the re-roof for. That was a huge, huge project. I mean, I always got called actually this spring down to the judge's office because the jury room was just completely coming through the ceiling. So that should not happen. Do we have any other major repairs? Not that I'm aware of right now, Corey hasn't been mentioning.
No challenges in the next two years that we have to be looking at?
No, we have the SRE building that's coming forth. We are going to have to do the airport terminal study, but that's going to be through our PFC fund.
And what about that wage thing that we talked about at the Personnel Committee meeting?
I was actually surprised you didn't bring it up during your Personnel Committee comments. Yeah, we were.
No, no, I.
But, yeah, we can do a wage study and like it was presented during the personnel.
I think we're underpaying a lot of people, and they're doing a lot of stuff that they're capable of leaving other places to do stuff. And I just want some type of comparison for our county and geographical location so that we can retain the talent we have and we don't keep losing it. That's my concern right now. I know nothing about how to do it, but I thought, is that something in here, or is that something you can do?
Um, well, I only have up until ten grand, so anything over that will come and knock in on your door and ask you.
Okay, so you can bring that to the commission later, once you find out the details?
Yeah, I guess we'll have to find out how much it costs and probably put it on an RFP because I'm sure it's going to be over that threshold, and then we can go from there as long as the board approves.
Because you see, every department is losing employees. Or they need more employees, and it's the wages in, you know, that atmosphere of being able to keep them, and they feel very good working for the county.
Absolutely, there is a lot of work. The county has changed over the several years of when it was created, so.
If I may, in the Finance Committee, we've already started looking at some of the wages. We've started with the part-timers. And what we're trying to do is look at wages, or what the hopes are is that we look at wages, what we can support without, if the economy takes a dump, that we're not having to lay people off or fire them for lack of money. So we have, we have put some thought into that, and we are working on that. But, and we got to start on it, but there's a long way to go. There's a lot of wages in this, in the whole county that needs to be addressed at this time.
What is our general fund balance, rainy def fund, whatever? What is our total?
Well, I mean, our total is about six to seven mil, but of that, there are certain parts that are restricted. So our unrestricted is probably about three-point-five.
Three-point-five million?
Yeah.
And where does that play, like in the last five years? Has it been consistent?
Pretty standard. I mean, we've been coasting at the same. You will see, well, the three-point-five, I did not include the ERP money because it's already been restricted earmarked for something else.
Yeah, well, if we didn't have that ERP money, would we be down to zero?
No, we probably wouldn't, just wouldn't be doing all the projects that we did.
But they needed to be done.
They needed to be done.
So that's where the.
Right, so it really helped us move forward in not having to cost to replace the roof, to get a new storage facility, to help keep our machinery out of the weather around here.
Well, I want to thank you for this breakdown. I really appreciate it. This is one of the best I've seen when it was done like this compared to the first thing you sent me.
Well, I know.
Ledger sheet.
That one is definitely, you got to have an eye for it. This one's my favorite. I like how it's broken down. I think the citizens would really like it, so.
I do, I would recommend anyone to look at this and get this and really look at it, and you can get all your questions answered and concerns.
And then also in October, the state mandates us to do like a client or citizen dashboard. So if any citizens wants to utilize on our administrator page, you'll see there'll be a lot of forums. It's debt, general fund activities. There's other statistics of citizens, so if you just want to go there too. And that comes on in October.
Commissioner Melner mentioned that you went, what did you see? You went to the website, you went to the budget page, and it was something not there. Why don't you explain what you thought would be good for that?
Let me see if I can find it.
So the budget page. Yep, and then it lists all the.
Would this be on that budget page for the?
It will be.
It's not now, though.
It hasn't been approved yet, so I will put it on there one year.
But last year's wasn't done like this?
Uh, there should have been a budget book. Yeah, I've done this for three years now.
And that wouldn't be on the website for the people, that what?
I would assume it would be. I know I made it for three years.
On the budget info, the last time anything was put in was twenty sixteen.
No, that can't be.
On this packet.
Oh, you're on Nextcloud, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, I can look in there. I'm talking about our actual Delta County MI.gov website. And then if you go into that budget information, this should be on there. Just twenty twenty-three may not be on, or twenty twenty-four information may not be on there as of yet.
The last time anything was put in back then was twenty sixteen.
Okay, I'll address that with Tracy and see if she can throw that stuff in there. I guess I never looked at that folder.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have items A through L. Actually, how many of these can we do in a mass motion, or do they always have to be?
Oh, can I get a motion to accept my presentation?
Yes, I would need a motion then.
So I'll support.
Baron, supported by Commissioner View to accept our administrator's presentation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now, items A through L. Are any of these, can we do these in a mass motion, or are they individuals?
We usually do them in mass. Yeah, we usually do them in mass.
Okay, so Commissioners, items A through L can be.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Baron moves that we would accept items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L.
I'll support.
Support by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? We need a roll call for this gentleman.
Melner?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moynihan?
Yes. All right, very good. We have the airport designated ramp observer, the DRO Job Description Position.
So this was what, sorry. This was what was brought forth to the Personnel Committee that's needed for the AMOC certification. This is the alternate method of compliance in order for us to have our larger planes fly in October tenth. And then also, we realized that the airport designated ramp observer, it isn't a full-time job because it's about four hours a day, depending on if there's delays. So we also incorporated custodial job duties in it. It would be a grade ten, so we're just looking for approval. This has been through both Finance and Personnel.
All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion that we accept it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson, support by Commissioner Baron, additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That would pass. Item number ten would be the courthouse LOA, employer. New employees.
Yes, so this LOA was a part of the contract last year. However, it did not get rolled over into the current contract. I did bring this forward to Personnel and Finance. However, Personnel, during the time between Personnel and Finance, the union had approached me, and they would like some additional points to be put in. That would be number five, and I think it's attached into your packet. So they asked for the LOA to not supersede Article twenty-five A, and then also to incorporate this into the next collective bargaining agreement. A letter of agreement. I apologize.
So we need a motion to, for the letter of agreement?
I'll make a motion to accept the letter of agreement.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Peterson.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Baron, additional discussion, excuse me. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would pass. All right, the prosecutor's carpal contract, if I'm saying that properly? Carpel?
So this was presented to our Finance Committee also. What, right now, our prosecuting attorney is using a case management software system from the nineteen nineties. So PAM, which is a due membership that they're a part of, approached them and suggested to go with this carpal contract. It will be no cost for the county for the next three years. It's going to be covered under the membership. However, you know, after that, we might have to pay a subscription to keep up to date. But there have high hopes that the PAM membership will cover it indefinitely. And then some other pointers on there is that Commissioner Baron had asked that this isn't shared with other, like, counties. So we're just looking for approval for this.
I would need a motion for approval of the contract?
I'm agreeing to approve the contract.
Move by Commissioner Peterson.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Baron, additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would pass. All right, item twelve would be the Motorola Service Contract.
This Motorola Service Contract is for dispatch. It's just an annual contract that we increase or that we approve every year. This year's increment was for one thousand two hundred dollars, which is reasonable.
I'll make a motion to support that.
Commissioner Melner moves and?
I'll support.
Commissioner View supports, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that would pass. Temporary part-time dispatcher position.
So the Director of Dispatch, Jen Peterson, approached me on her difficulties in trying to find a full-time position for dispatch. So she came with an out-of-the-box thought and. So, um, she came with an out-of-the-box thought and to have like a temporary part-time position, they already have somebody that's interested in this. Um, just until they're full-time, they can get somebody full-time in and then, of course, this position would go away. Um, right now, they've been running with one down for a while now, all through the summer, and the full-time individuals, they're, they're getting tired, so I would really like to see this approved.
And, and this is an experienced person that worked there before.
Right, so we would not have to do any training.
Yeah.
Um, this person doesn't come with any fringe benefits. Um, and also, we'll be paying this person straight time instead of time and a half like we're paying the other individuals.
I need a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner View and supported by Commissioner Melner, additional discussion. All those in favor of hiring the part-time signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That would pass. Item number 14 is the Department of Human Services Pinecrest Board Appointment or Assignment.
Um, so it was brought to my attention that there is a conflict of time with Commissioner Melner. He is on, I believe it's the QPAD Executive Board and Pinecrest, and they're at the same time. So, he can't be two places at once, and we would like to see somebody, um, reassigned to the Pinecrest Board. They had put a request into to have somebody that is able to go.
So, we simply would need to, uh...
Appoint another commissioner.
Apologize that we have a position open and have people apply for it?
Nope, it's a commissioner.
Yeah, it has to be a commissioner.
All right. Well...
And I've, and I've tried to get either QPAD or Pinecrest to change their times and neither one of them will change their times, so.
What, what's the times of the meeting, John, and the dates?
Two o'clock on Thursdays.
Two o'clock.
Every Thursday?
On the fourth?
No, no. Every month.
So, once a month, once a Thursday?
Yeah, fourth, Thursday.
And it's the last Thursday if I'm not mistaken.
Can you handle it, Commissioner? Do you want it?
Like, who, me?
Yes, you. If you want it, we'll appoint.
Well, if nobody else takes it, I, I can...
Well, if you want it, I'll, I'll...
It's this Thursday.
Well, it's, well, I just take off work. I mean, I take dock time and do what I have to do to service the county constituents.
I would move that we appoint Commissioner View to that position.
You need a support? I'd like to know where it is. Took me 20 minutes to find it before, but...
Thirty minutes to get there.
It's not in Esconaba?
No, it's, uh...
Well, from, from Frampton, yeah.
And Commissioner View, if you can't attend this week, I can run out there and attend, and so you, you know. I mean, I have no voting, but I mean, at least somebody is representing the county. I already looked at, um, where, when it was and everything, planned on it in my schedule.
You need board motion or can we?
Uh, to put Commissioner View on, yes.
All right, well, I'm, I'm, uh, chairman shouldn't, but all right, go ahead. Any support?
I support.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, if it would please the Commission, could we do a general public comment or would you consider it? All right, we have two closed sessions here. Just a thought.
Let's do, uh, the public comment.
All right, so what we're going to do is we're going to, uh, so you don't, we don't know how long we're going to take. General public comment, you have three minutes to address the board. They wish to speak, please. Introduce yourself and, uh...
I looked at this up on, and it took me in another direction, so I could tell you where it is.
Name is Kay Roland. Um, somebody wanted to know why there was a recall. Well, I'll let you know why. Mr. Moyle, you keep pushing for Graham, a buddy. You already agreed on something a few meetings ago, and now you wait until Prosecutor Lauren isn't here and you bring it up again. And of course, the three Commissioners always vote the same way, so I, I consider that sneaky, just personal. Um, Mr. Moyle already contacted Graham without board approval to write up the new rules and procedures for Delta County. Was Prosecutor Lauren asked? Probably not. Who knows how many times Mr. Moyle or any other Commissioner for that matter will contact Mr. Graham and for what items without board approval? What happens if two or three Commissioners contact him on the same item? Will he bill for two or three different Commissioners contacting him? Uh, we can't FOIA Reed's bill, but we can FOIA the county's bill to make sure that, um, there is no conflict of interest there. Uh, hopefully, the county's bill will be itemized. And it's shenanigans like this why the recall has been pushed. I had wanted to know the total tax rate, and you gave me some, you gave some figures. I added them up and they came to 3.87. I know the county usually has a tax rate of five point something, but I can contact Equalization and I'm sure they'll tell me about that. My next item was, um, I've been talking to Mr. Clayton Harris a little bit too much. Okay, so I want to give you a little history lesson. Back in 1975, we had two building inspectors, one zoning administrator, and one secretary. That was four full-time people in that department. Now, it's my understanding, we've got a part-time building inspector and a secretary. That makes one and a half. I'm kind of cynical, so I worry about the vehicle and I hope it's not used for personal use, so hopefully it'll last a long time. I used to audit building permits to new construction so to make sure it's on the tax roll, so everyone pays their fair share of taxes. If they don't have a building permit, then I know they're not on the tax roll. This is a significant increase. I have found that when I worked. A significant increase to the county income along with all the other taxing levy entities in the county. Um, also, I understand that, uh, the past building permits have been destroyed. Now, that's a violation of state law, and you're going to need an attorney, uh, for county liability issues if that is indeed true. So, I get, oh, perfect timing!
Appreciate it. All right, general public comment, please. You have three minutes to address the Commission.
Hey, Scott, Park River. Ms. Wickman is elected by the people to defend the people and take care of our county and keep us safe. She's not first and foremost elected and then brought here to ask for a raise because you're asking too many questions. Her expertise, uh, she came in almost fresh out of school. She came in and started working with a very inexperienced, terrible prosecutor. That prosecutor was so bad that he quit his job in the quiet of the night. And on a rather quick secretive sequence, sequence of events, he was hired by our county to be our county administrator. He lasted one year. He was a lawyer. And a little side note here, I knew this story, but I went back in the minutes to double check. In 2018, Mr. Moyle attempted to slow down that bad decision. I'm a little late, Mr. Moyle, but I appreciate that you had some common sense and realized that that was a bad decision, which played out less than a year later, so thank you. I, uh... I don't know how Ms. Wickham can provide our Commissioners with all of the help they need when, uh, I do know that the fee she charges adds to her salary. Uh, but I would think that first and foremost, the voters would like to see her catch up on court cases, reduce the number of plea deals, and increase her conviction rates, which were very low. This will keep our community much safer. Her office is running three courts with two attorneys. They have been understaffed since she took office. They're winging it. And she's trying to prepare for a murder trial right now. So, when I first heard Mr. Graham's name, I did some research. I looked him up. He's highly respected. He's a winner. He sounds like a bargain. Many cities and counties, I would guess most, contract attorneys for this reason, and I think it was a good decision that you made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
General public comment, please. You have three minutes to address the board.
Sir? My name is Clayton Harris. I live in Rapid River, Baldwin Township. I brought this dwelling to the attention of the Building Department. The family had built it, was occupying it, absolutely no permits from any kind, any inspections. The building inspector, I've talked to him, has no authority or no power to find this family. The only thing they can do is charge them one and a half times the cost of the permit. They've lit, used this dwelling for approximately five years, not on the tax roll. Mile and a half away from this place. This picture is not complete. This place has been built, no permits, no inspections, four or five years ago. Not on the tax roll. The power shed for this building burnt to the ground and could have started the forest on fire. This building right here is right on the side of M-35 One Street before you get into downtown Perkins. No building permits, no inspections. I looked at the record cards for the homes in my township. The majority of our record cards have no data in them for the assessment that is supposed to happen every five years. I picked one home out. This home has three large barns in a home. The home is double the size. One barn is on the tax roll. I don't know which one. Right here at the end, there's a little tiny outbuilding that is on the tax roll. This one has not been reassessed in probably 30 years. This is how much taxes aren't being collected by a majority of people. When I asked the building inspector, please, why aren't you pulling these up? Why aren't you finding them? He said, this problem is systemic in Delta County. But yet, I build a house in this county, and I'm not supposed to be reassessed for five years. I look in these cards and the assessor was at the end of my driveway on December 29th, 2022. When you have, I am telling you, I have countless pages. They knew in Baldwin Township that the previous assessor wasn't doing her job. When Jack Smith, our building inspector, was mason-built, he fired that individual for not doing work. This is just one card. That assessor filled out this form where you're supposed to. Every five years, there should be something in there so that everybody... They don't even have a plan like, let's do this. The assessors have double jobs. They have the permanent job, full-time assessing. They can't assess three townships' homes in daylight. Half of the year here, we're dark after. They're off from work.
Appreciate your time, sir. General public comment, if you can, if you want to get ahold of me after the meeting, we can talk.
I would love to, but I think you should give the Building Department the authority to find people.
Mr. Harris, please step down. Mr. Kaplan, welcome.
Thank you so much. Joe Kaplan, Ford River Township. I would like to address an amendment to the easement that was discussed first and approved by this board on August 15th. On August 17th, if you recall, the state reached out to you to say that, that the easement and, in changing the easement agreement with Mr. Mattson in the county was most certainly a breach of the contract of this trust fund up in the Cornell Forest, 1,400 acres. It was purchased with trust fund money. When Mr. Mattson, working under the auspices of the Delta Conservation District, which he's been doing since, I think, 1988, he negotiated the deal, but he had a side deal to buy adjacent property. I raised that as an issue that night when you approved that as a conflict, potential conflict of interest, using his position for personal gain. It was approved anyway on the 17th of August. Two days later, uh, the state notified you that it was most undoubtedly a breach of the contract, and it would be looked at. Our own Board of Directors of the Delta Conservation District, for which Mr. Mattson is employed, asked for assistance from the Attorney General. On August 21st, the deed was recorded. On September 12th, almost a month later, three weeks later, the First Amendment to the contract was recorded with the registered deeds to, to address the fact that that easement agreement that Mr. Moyle and Mr. Mattson signed that night was recorded with the registered deeds without being notarized. One of the most basic principles of registered deeds, to record something that's been notarized. So, instead of bringing it to the attention, don't watch the clock, instead of bringing it to the attention of your Commissioners that tried to raise this at the next board meeting, which I think was just two weeks ago, you waited a month and then you just signed two pages for the amendment agreement, didn't go to the county to get notarized, went to First Bank, where the district does all its banking. So, if you're not, you know, the, the idea that this is okay, that this is open government and transparent government, where you're held accountable, where you answer questions like, did you authorize $53,000 in bonuses from the park funds to the district funds? How come we don't get answers? How come when you're waiting for a response from the state, Mr. Peterson, you said, you submitted additional information. You contacted the state, the trust fund, to say, hey, can you come up here and take a look at this? How come you're amending something that wasn't notarized in the first place? And I warned you that there's a lot of things wrong with this. There's more in there. Maybe Mr. Graham can take care of it for you. Unbelievable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Please hold your applause. All right, we will enforce that. Sorry. If you want to clap because somebody's retiring or receiving an award, fine. Other than that, please hold your applause.
Steve Benoit, Wells Township. Bob, you're my Commissioner. This, uh, last week, I believe it was, there was a Finance Committee meeting, and you were talking about, uh, trying to help your employees. Um, they brought forth something to you to help ease their pain that they're going through right now. You did not have enough respect at that time to address those employees. You decided to table the situation. But you had time to go out on Facebook and make a comment. Last Friday at the county finance meeting, we were asked to approve the hiring of a consultant for the court system. We were first told it was for training the new court administrator. As a discussion advanced, it was disclosed that the consultant was Emily DeSaville. The county administrator that was fired in February by the county board. Emily was actually going to be hired to help catch up on paperwork. She would be worked as long as possible, would be worked as, the pay would be $50 an hour, over $25 an hour. Then, most other employees, we want to help them with their backlog. And if they bring a reasonable solution to the table, we would be glad to consider it. At a time when most all county employees are being paid substandard wages, we cannot make special allowances for one without looking at everyone else. I campaigned and continue to campaign and run as a conservative. If we want to see this county grow and continue to be a place that people want to move to, we need to continue to elect constitutional fiscal conservatives. Part of an employee, part of your employee and all of our employees at this county is also life-work balance. They clearly told you at that meeting that they were overloaded, that they were drowning. You could not answer their questions. You did not comment to them. You waited for Mr. Barron to make a comment, and then you chose to ignore them. So, I ask you now, since this county has, Commission has made so much choices to waste money, to spend money, open their contracts, pay them what they deserve, and don't sit and fool around with wasting their time. Get them help and get that help now. And if you think their wages are substandard, then pay it. Don't use it to move yourself forward.
Please stop your applause. General public comment. Thank you, Mr. Benoit.
Ryan Godfrey Gladstone. I'm a little bit lighter tonight with what I'm going to say. Uh, Commissioner View, you talk about you want Zoom in here. Has anybody looked into some of the audio/video clubs for the high schools in the area and see if we can get some of the high schoolers involved, um, with some of their equipment? You can start with YouTube Live and start with that, and then maybe they can, uh, have an email or something where they can have the questions that can be handed off to a Commissioner to vet before it gets handed into for an actual question. that can be handed off to a commissioner to vet before it gets handed into for an actual question. Our reason I say that is I have a background in film. So getting the schools involved, it doesn't matter which one it is, getting the kids out of the house and involved in, in something that would be very, very good for us.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. General public comment, please. General public comment.
Hello, Gary Gustafson from Rapid River. Steve, you disappoint me and confuse me. How, the veterans, Dave from the VA, told you exactly what he needed. He needs another VSO, not a secretary. A VSO does a lot of secretarial stuff, type stuff, but they have to have knowledge on how to do the paperwork. And that's what they're doing all day is paperwork. So he basically is an educated secretary. So getting him, someone to do his paperwork, isn't going to help him that much, I don't think. And what's the pay difference between a secretary and a VSO? And honestly, when my country asked me to serve them and risk my life and write them a blank check, I didn't say, well, in about two to three years, maybe I'll think about doing it at 100%. Until then, you get what you get and be happy. You, this is disrespectful. He told you what we need. Do it. Spend the money. No one else up here had a problem with it. All of a sudden, now we're going to backstep and we're not going to give a VSO? That's disgusting. And as far as the easement goes, Warehouser needs to be worried with their attorneys. Did this a long time ago without asking the trust fund as well. And yeah, the trust fund is not an enforcement agency, but the state bar does look at stuff like this. And any attorney that's involved in this should be very concerned about that, in my opinion. I'm not an attorney. But also, in my opinion, you should look up Act, Federal Act Against Forgery. This document was a forgery, it's a counterfeit. What you did was purported as real, you knew it wasn't legal and it could cost the county $800,000 and it's diminishing the rights of the citizens of the state. And that grant money comes from the trust fund, which is called out for in the Constitution. Everything they do is regulated by law. They can't give you permission to do what you did. They told you they couldn't do it. You did it anyway. It's not notarized, it's not a legal document, you're purporting it as real. That's a criminal offense. For counterfeiting, every charge is about 14 years. So in my opinion, that's where you're headed. And I've been trying to file a complaint. Sheriff Department told me it's a conflict of interest, but the state police is going to be taking my complaint hopefully this week. Otherwise, the FBI said they're interested. So keep it up. Good luck.
Thank you, sir. Stop the applause, please. Step, general public comment.
Greetings. My name is Denege Mols. I'm relatively new to Escanaba. It's been an enlightening experience. A lot of people here, I'm really surprised, do not even know the roles, the elected position of a precinct delegate and that Delta County only has 42 precinct delegates out of 87 positions. Folks, you need to get up, you need to run, you need to know the importance of a precinct delegate. Anybody here a precinct delegate? There you go. Three of them. They should be at these meetings. They should be stepping up and telling people the roles and responsibilities in each of their precincts. My precinct. Four positions are filled, three empty. That's it. Get out and vote, do your job, people. Become a precinct delegate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please stop. I'm going to ask you one more time and then I'm going to have you leave the room. Stop clapping, it's against the policies. Well, then, sir, I'm asking you once. Please refrain from clapping.
I object.
I, that's, you're out of order.
Dave? He objected?
I appeal.
All right, you, you appeal my decision. I didn't ask you to leave the room yet.
I appeal, it's not wrong. It's not wrong to clap.
Sit down, please, sir, you're out of order. Sit down, please, you're out of order, sir. General public comment. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Good evening. My name is Randy Scott, Ford River Township. And I'm calling, I'm speaking tonight to try to counteract some of all the negativity that I feel that's going on in the room here. But a segue on the, a recall petition. I read it the other day and the, the explanation or the reason for the recall is stated primarily on all the petitions is because of dismissal of the county administrator at that time. Well, I've worked for 45 years now serving municipalities. I'm a professional engineer and I've worked for cities, townships, authorities all across the state of Michigan, mostly in the Upper Peninsula in the last several years. So I've known a lot of people and I have sat through thousands of hours of meetings. I happen to be one that believes and wants to see an efficient meeting. I've sat in my rear end for so many years in a chair that I like to see business done, taken care of, a meeting opened, closed, business taken and finished. But the point of that recall to me, because we happened, we were in Florida at the time, but we watched the meeting on the Zoom. And I've seen and known many, many, many city managers. I've seen a lot of dismissals, lots of them. One of the most interesting ones happened here in Gladstone a number of years back. But I've seen, I've seen city councils where they open every meeting with a motion to dismiss the city manager. And it went for two and a half years with a 3-2 vote not to do it. So I've seen this, a lot. What you did that night was within your rights to do. They serve at the pleasure of the board, council, whatever. And I watched the opening of that when Emily got in front of the, to the microphone and spoke. And I started doing a little research because most of the people I knew that are managers belong to the ICMA, the International City Managers Association, County Managers Association. And just looking at the, they just redid them in June. They have, I believe, 10 tenants now, they used to have 17, I think. She violated three of those tenants that evening. That's an ethics violation. So I think you were within your rights and I would have been deeply disappointed if you had, after watching this happen played out over and over and over again, all over the place, I would have been deeply disappointed if you hadn't done what you did. So I regret that you're having to face recall over doing your job. I resent the fact that we may have to pay for an election. If there's no other issues that come up in that May election, we're going to, and I was on the Ford River Township Board, so I know what our board elections or the local elections cost, neighborhood of $5,000. I'm going to resent having to pay for that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. General public comment, please. General public comment. Very good.
This is from Stephen Kropsky, Escanaba, Michigan. I feel very strongly that the public has made an excellent choice in their voting decisions, creating a new board that reflects the various views and political stances of the many residents of Delta County. The hardship and scrutiny public office holds is not to be taken lightly. We are all quick to complain and rant when we don't get our way. Many, myself and many others understand this and realize the commissioners are only human. In light of the strongly turbulent political climate, I would like, I would just like to say thank you for enduring the hardships and sacrifices public service entails. Thank you.
Please hold your applause. Thank you. Last call now for general public comment. All right, it will be closed down, we will go into closed session. I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Supported.
Supported by Commissioner Melner. Do we need a roll call or just a? I need a roll call for closed session, please. This will be to discuss unit contracts for court and opioid settlement.
Hounder?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yep.
And Moyle?
Yes.
We are back in session. Well, I need a motion to come out of closed session before we come into open session.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner View. To enter back into open session, I need to vote, please.
No, we don't vote.
If you don't have the rule. Oh, we don't? All right, very good. Then we are back into open session. We made no votes, no decisions in the closed session on two separate matters. Commissioner, what is your pleasure?
On which?
On the opioid. On the opioid settlement?
I will make a motion that we sign.
You authorize the board to have the chair sign the opioid settlement?
Yes.
All right, that will be Commissioner Mellner's vote.
I'll support that.
Okay, you have a support from Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that opioid settlement, we will accept the settlement.
I would just like to mention that that was for a small amount of, how much was it, Ashley? Sixteen hundred and some dollars?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yeah.
It was for one of the companies that was in that settlement to pay out that went bankrupt. That were going to get us a small, small amount to be used, not the full amount that we already got.
In reference to the issue of the employee contract, what is your pleasure, Commissioner?
I'll move that we accept the probate court unit contract as submitted.
I'll support.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner View, support by Commissioner Mellner to accept the contract for our probate court. You want a roll call or? No, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. All right, very good. We have commissioners' concerns. Mr. Peterson, you're next.
I was at the interviews for the airport. And as Ashley said, we had a very good person come in, kind of excited about him. I think he's going to be a good guy. He lives right here in the area. And, and he is interested in sticking around and being part of the, part of the community. I think we got a little decision making to make yet, but hopefully we will have the manager's position close.
That's it.
Yeah, a couple of things. The health department has their mobile units supposed to probably be delivered by the end of the month, and they're going to probably put it on display at one of the township associations meetings in the next couple of months. And what it is, when, it can go out to the townships all over the county and, you know, do shots and, and look at different things medically for, for townships to help them out. It's a nice little mobile unit that'll be stationed at the service center, new building being built here. As far as the VSO and my recommendations to have a secretary, if, if I had my independent choice of doing something, I would give Dave whatever he wants. All I looked at is what was happening over the last six, seven, eight years and how he's been pleading for stuff. So I thought I would start with little baby steps. And, and that's why I recommended to do what we had to do. I'm, I'm not trying to downplay what they had. If the commission would consider a motion to, at the next meeting, to fully service everything he wants, you have my support 100 percent. I attended a webinar in Eskenaba Township on the procedure of the agenda, and I'll be bringing some of that stuff up later on throughout my next year on the commission to get ours honed in to be the best it can be in, in the state, I guess. They also gave me information on, they want to be part of that Tiger grant thing through the state. I will be looking at getting some Hannibal grants for that along with what the, the Eagle has for that. Other than that, that's, oh, I wanted to make a comment that our, that letter that our prosecuting attorney gave us, that we are handling substantial caseloads. We are doing success. They've been doing very successful in Delta County. Their averages are, in Michigan is seventeen point seven percent commitment rate for our imprisonment commitment, and we're at twenty eight point nine percent. So our, our prosecuting office is doing real good in trying the cases in the county. Thank you.
Mr. Mellner?
No comments.
Mr. Barron?
Yes, I do have a comment, but it's, it's a quote from George Washington. "If the freedom of speech is taken away, then dumb and silent we may be led like sheep to the slaughter." I'm thankful for the board passing these procedural changes and, because when the, when the board is doing its business and it's interrupted by the audience or parts of the audience, it's, it's
We are back in session. Well, I need a motion to come out of closed session before we come into open session.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner View to enter back into open session. I need to vote, please?
No, we don't have to vote.
Oh, we don't? All right, very good. Then we are back into open session. We made no votes, no decisions in the closed session on two separate matters. Commissioner, what is your pleasure?
On which?
On the-
On the opioid?
On the opioid settlement.
I will make a motion that we sign.
You authorize the board to have the chair sign the opioid settlement?
Yes.
All right, that would be Commissioner Mellner's vote.
I'll support that.
Okay, you have a support from Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that opioid settlement, we will accept the settlement.
I would just like to mention that that was for a small amount of, how much was it, Ashley? Sixteen hundred and some dollars?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yeah.
It was for one of the companies that was in that settlement to pay out that went bankrupt, that were going to get a small, small amount to be used, not the full amount that we already got.
In reference to the issue of the employee contract, what is your pleasure, Commissioner?
I'll move that we accept the probate court unit contract as submitted.
I'll support.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner View, support by Commissioner Mellner to accept the contract for our probate court. You want a roll call or? No, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. All right, very good. We have commissioners' concerns. Mr. Peterson, you're next.
I was at the interviews for the airport. And as Ashley said, we had a very good person come in, kind of excited about him. I think he's going to be a good guy. He lives right here in the area and he is interested in sticking around and being part of the, part of the community. I think we got a little decision-making to make yet, but hopefully we will have the manager's position.
Close. Mr. View?
Yeah, a couple of things. The health department has their mobile units supposed to probably be delivered by the end of the month, and they're going to probably put it on display at one of the township associations meetings in the next couple of months. And what it is, when, it can go out to the townships all over the county and, you know, do shots and, and look at different things medically for, for townships to help them out. It's a nice little mobile unit that'll be stationed at the service center, new building being built here. As far as the VSO and my recommendations to have a secretary, if, if I had my independent choice of doing something, I would give Dave whatever he wants. All I looked at is what was happening over the last six, seven, eight years and how he's been pleading for stuff, so I thought I would start with little baby steps. And, and that's why I recommended to do what we had to do. I'm, I'm not trying to downplay what they had. If the commission would consider a motion to, at the next meeting, to fully service everything he wants, you have my support 100 percent. I attended a webinar in Eskenaba Township on the procedure of the agenda, and I'll be bringing some of that stuff up later on throughout my next year on the commission to get ours honed in to be the best it can be in, in the state, I guess. They also gave me information on, they want to be part of that Tiger grant thing through the state. I will be looking at getting some Hannibal grants for that along with what the, the Eagle has for that. Other than that, that's, oh, I wanted to make a comment that our, that letter that our prosecuting attorney gave us that we are handling substantial caseloads, we are doing success, they've been doing very successful in Delta County. Their averages are, in Michigan, is 17.7 percent commitment rate for our imprisonment commitment, and we're at 28.9 percent. So our prosecuting office is doing real good in trying the cases in the county. Thank you.
Mr. Mellner?
No comments.
Mr. Barron?
Yes, I do have a comment, but it's, it's a quote from George Washington. "If the freedom of speech is taken away, then dumb and silent we may be led, like sheep to the slaughter." I'm thankful for the board passing these procedural changes and, because when the, when the board is doing its business and it's interrupted by the audience or parts of the audience, it's, it's sending us dumb and silent to the slaughter like sheep. And I'm thankful that we have a stronger tool to take care of that.
Thank you. Nancy?
Ashley? I just wanted to thank everyone for attending tonight during my budget presentation. It was my first one, and thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things. Mr. View, thank you for stepping up to the plate and taking that committee appointment. Appreciate that. Coming over the last several months, I've noticed some young people and some folks, every meeting here, they never talk, they're here, I believe Christians, and they're, they're either praying or sending good energy, but yeah, very grateful. And when I see young people here picking up, you know, interaction from their government or just being here to support or even to question, I, I am, I'm grateful. So other than that, we have no 30, we do have a 30-day, no, we don't, we fill that tonight. The next Board of Commissioners meeting, we have regularly, the month of October, we have three of them. We have our compulsory meeting, and we have a meeting on the 10th, and then there's a meeting a week after that.
We canceled the 3rd.
We canceled the 3rd meeting?
Yes.
October 3rd.
Okay, we thought canceled. So we have a meeting on the 10th and on the 17th?
Yes.
All right, very good. I do apologize. At the service center, right here, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor, go home. Thank you.